Good evening, we'd like to call this September 24th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here.
Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Berman, would you lead us in the present pledge of allegiance tonight?
Please, 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 please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Leading us in prayer this evening is Chance Brimham.
Thank you, Council, once again, for continuing with this process. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just, we thank you, God, for the opportunity to be here tonight together, Sean. We thank you, God, that you have appointed leaders and speakers and people who will help to lead and guide and serve this city. We pray, God, tonight, that everything that we do and say and think would be about the good of this community, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any commissioners have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number five, citizens' comments. Raymond Gilmore. Again, with citizen comments, there is a time limit of three minutes. If there are any comments to be made, they'll be made either during departmental comment, but this is not a debate. So, three minutes with your comments tonight.
Okay, first one is, do I have things up sidewalks? Especially in one town? People block the sidewalks, you can't clear the sidewalks, especially when migrant kids have to walk down to the bus stops, gotta walk out in the street, you know, cause it was talking to my attention. The second one is, dogs, or coyote that looks like it, or a dog that looks like a coyote, we've got roaming around in the hood. And the third one, childproof kit on cools. We don't need a fence, we need a childproof kit, self-clothing, self-latching, but kids can wander in, in, in the pool. I know, I know somebody have seen them, 'cause I asked that question, you grabbing down the hole, what did you see? Okay, the next one is, the paddles, we gotta get paddles. So, a good enough job, but it wasn't a good job, because people now complaining here. And we'd like to get that speeding sign put up again for whipperson, closer to the exit. We had a dog that ran over there last week. And also, I've been a electrical supervisor almost twenty years, take the ASAMAC CDL license, after I have my check, so, just so you know, so, when I was a supervisor, people called me about stuff, I'd go out, take a look, see what it was, and while going out, I know I passed a bunch of stuff that was wrong, you know, just like I said, and I know people out looking around. And also, people got a lot of door surveillance and security cameras. I had to put up a security video for the subdivision the other day, a couple people complaining about somebody taking pictures in their backyard, you know, it was a guy, a contractor, who was supposed to do that stuff. Okay? I mean, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Deputy Berman?
Mayor McKinney, General Lee, honorable service. I stand before you this evening to call your attention to an article that was printed in Sunday, last Sunday, September 19th, Chicago Tribune, regarding Zion and the North Unit of Illinois Beach State Park as being an excellent place to watch the annual hawk migration south of the lager. The article, incidentally, specifically mentions Paul and Jen's suite. Bring it to, what is your official response, sir?
Yes.
Is your official response, guys?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Berman.
I thank you for your time, for your attention, Mr. Mayor, permission to stand down, sir.
Permission granted. Mr. Tracy Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. It's been a long time since I've been able to see it, I forget what I did. I'm gonna address that deconstructional share of the property, just so the gentleman goes right to start, I'm the former compliance officer when he did the servicing ten years ago. Last meeting I known the mayor, did a great job asking for any room, any way Zion residents could be part of the construction. And so, the next day I reached out to Schaumburg office, and I sent a email, and before eight eleven o'clock that day, as I started at nine in the morning, I got a call from Springfield. And someone I used to work with, and I was working at I.D.A., walked through, read up the contract on their website, and it was Peter Baker, instance, supplying with another company. Now, it used to be the state of Illinois mandated 10 percent DVE participation, but on this project, it's 19 percent. Now, if anyone comes to Zion to do any such work, all that paperwork should be off filed at the office here in Zion that gives those permits, and also, with that information should be, or supposed to be, who the DVE is and how they manage those DVE goals. Now, generally, for someone like you or Commissioner Fryerson, you get one point. For persons like Commissioner Holmes, you get two points for DVE participation. Now, if that person is a flagger, that group of benefits, they make $28 an hour. Spoke with four people that are working on this contract, and they were wondering themselves, where is the DVE participation, and how those goals are gonna be met? It doesn't, it's not being met, as simple as that. I spoke to I.D.A. about it, they said it's very interesting, and that all that information, because they don't give us that much detail, should already be printed out, filed in your office, and all the other municipalities that this construction is making its way through, just like even the times pass. So, now, you, Mr. Fryer, gentlemen, spoke of the project, whom are the DVEs that are part of this project? If they're flagger's, which I just gave you the 20 percentage on how it breaks down, flagger's generally make $28 an hour, including benefits. So, I spoke to people out here working the street, they don't know what the DVE participation is. So, where is the break down? I.D.A. has 19 percent of those, and they don't give away for us any. So, where is the participation? Someone like me that forwards you, which you should already have on file, the website, and all the lettings are done generally around March, so everyone can get everything they get. But even the lettings, you already have a Illinois website for all of, whether it's I.D.A. or who member, that lets you know a listing of all your DVEs, whether you need a striker, a flagger, or a sweeper, all your information is there.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Abdul Bakar? Okay. Shaun White?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I stand here for today to say that I'm gonna have you with the chief of squad, at Zion to touch high school. You guys came out to the town hall meeting, appreciate that, I heard it was transparent all, what happened there. I think that we took a risk, we gambled our kids, my kids go ahead at school, and what happened, and what was, how it was portrayed from the city's point of view. I don't think it was a joint effort, I think we had a plan, it was a plan in place, and the plan was switched, and we gambled our kids' lives. If it was something that was, what was said, not given meaning, it was said that we thought it had been something else, but if you think it's gonna be something else, carry the plan out correctly all the way through, and don't take risks. I think we took, I guess, that risk with our children on that day. I know that the high schools have just taken some of the blame, but I think there's also shoulder-ing that has to be done on both sides of this equation, instead of a partnership or whatever. But, unfortunately, my wife can't speak, because she went there at seven o'clock to sign it. But, I just think that we need a better job of being transparent on what really happened, what took place, because we have parents that are still upset, we're still calling, we're still angry, just have questions, and just for my wife being out there on both sides, and how she was treated by some colored work officials, and how she was treated by some not-so-friendly police officers trying to get information, as least a testimony that it's just not the high school that's carrying the blame or whatever, it's everybody that was involved in this situation incident. I stand here just because my two daughters are involved in this, and they're still talking about, they're still traumatized about that, about how it took place, and how, how long was that going to carry on for them? And then they question, they ask me, Dad, what happens if there's real things, and then I act like this, and then I'm gonna act like this? So, I got a thirteen-year-old, and I have, she's turning fourteen today, and then they're gonna be sixteen next month, and they're concerned about things that they shouldn't be concerned about, but when we have responses, and they were at that meeting, and we didn't even look at the participation, what was said and what was not said, and how we took the blame, but I think it's just we shoulder around, everybody's had the responsibility of what happened, especially when you say you have a plan, you know, put it in place, but you halfway do a plan, it's as if volume of what, what was said and what was not done. And so, I'm frustrated and angry that if you say it's something else, do it all the way to the end and carry it out, don't halfway do it and gamble in the rest of the community and our children's lives with a plan that wasn't even all that come out. I appreciate your time, I know that you was not probably part of that, being up there with Ray Ray, what was his name, maybe you should have been up there taking questions or whatever, but I just feel that what happened and how I look at it from a standpoint, it was different. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Calvin Cox?
Hi, I'm the architect for the minarette mosque in Zion, and, Mr. White, welcome.
Yes.
Oh, my, 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 my. But, there's actually already two hundred towers that are actually bigger than the tower that we're thinking of, a seventy-foot tower. There's two hundred of them, and they're wider, and they're oak trees. So, our tower, what we're looking for, the tower's already approved as far as the forty-foot tower, it's, you know, the streets have been approved, the highways, the FAA, you know, the airplanes, it's been approved to go up to seventy, but the location is already there. And the ground is very strong, you know, the tower will weigh about a hundred and sixty thousand pounds, and the site can really support five hundred thousand pounds if it's only four thousand GSI soil, which is four thousand to seven thousand. So, there's no problem with it falling over, which a fellow said by Lake Michigan, the soil was poor a couple weeks ago, but actually, Chicago had the tallest buildings in the world, so, it's good soil. And as far as lighting, there's, it goes down to zero, I did the photometer for the site, so it goes down to zero foot candles all around, and as far as, as far as the cars parked on the street, there were cars in the street during the groundbreaking, but actually, the parking lots isn't completed yet, in a couple weeks, you know, or a couple months, there'll be a hundred parking spaces, it'll be fine. And as far as the tower, it's very slender, and it's attractive, it'll probably be 10 feet wider, so, the footprint is probably about a hundred square feet for the footprint, and it's four stories, so it's probably about four hundred square feet on the size of a small bedroom, but it's tall and elegant. I think for Zion, using your space, I think will be important for the next two hundred years, hundred years, two hundred years, you either grow or you die, that's a basic universal principle, and I think Zion should continue to grow for the next couple hundred years. They went a lot big, and they built a hundred and seventy-foot tall courthouse building, the tower was a hundred and seventy feet tall, and they were very proud of it, and said that hopefully it'll bring in born descendants. I think Zion should continue to grow for the next couple hundred years, and if you utilize that space from thirty feet up to a hundred feet, you know, that's your space as trustees and as the mayor to utilize, you know, it'll keep your parks, keep your recreation areas, the old parks, or if they're beautiful, with your life front, but utilize that space up above, and you can continue to grow and prosper in the important space of Zion, and it'll continue to be important. In ancient history, they had obelisks, and also, it was a monumental, and they brought it, oh, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Champagne?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'd like to say thank you for all your hard work on September 24th, all eight. I appreciate everything that everybody did, including Commissioner Nabel and Mrs. Bronson, because I know there was a lot of hard work that went into everybody, and your persistence paid off, and you created this, Commissioner Fisher, I know you got bronzo's, and to something, Commissioner Fryerson, you got us into the land bank, and I'm just delighted to see that we are making forward progress, slowly but surely. It wouldn't have happened if you hadn't started the last four to six years, and then it's anxious, and I think it all really started with this brand and app that you're still working on, so, I think it's all of you, and I think we should have that minarette come up a little bit higher.
Thank you. Mrs. White, did you have something to say, since you're here?
I do. I was at the school, at the main office, prior to the police arrival, so, I was able to see everything from beginning to end, and it was, the campus was fine up until, I mean, as my doctor said, for the most part, the parents did their job, stayed out of the way, there were a few that were a little angry, and I feel were in the police's way. However, when Superintendent Rodriguez came out and spoke to the parents, who were told that the children would be released from the corner art center, and in less than twenty minutes, thirty minutes, were being texting us, just saying, no, they're not be released from New Tech. My problem with that is, I have worked in corrections, I have done these type of drills, I've done that type of drill, I know what these drills look like, I know what it's supposed to look like, I know what's supposed to happen. There was no staging area for the parents, we get over to New Tech. The, it was horrible. There was no police presence, there was Estha, there was Public Works, and a few CSOs. There was total chaos, there was no direction, and for your Public Works employees to call these parents assholes when they're frustrated and their children have been traumatized was so unprofessional, and if you're Public Works, you should know how to work and speak with the public, not calling them out of their names, not getting angry, because it's not your kid over there, it's not your kid being traumatized, but you should have some sort of compassion, because it very well could have been. I have a problem with the way our citizens of Zion are being treated. There's a problem, and I feel like if it's not addressed by you, Mr. Mayor, because leadership starts from the top, and heavy is the head that wears the crown, is what I always say. And so, some way, somehow, you're gonna have to build a man, you're gonna have to do some training, something, because something has to be done, so that the taxpayers of Zion that are paying these salaries are not being mistreated and are not being subject to whatever you, and I'm saying you as the people that were speaking, feel you can just say, it was traumatizing for our children, it was traumatizing for us as parents, and as citizens, because I ran into plenty of people who didn't even have children there, they had no idea what was going on.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Clyde McElmore?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilor. I wanna speak on the crime in Zion. There's been a lot of disparities, we've been having a lot of shootings, just been had a young man killed, that wasn't a game, man, it was a basketball, you know, and come to find out, he was a good friend of my son, you know, and it could have been my son. I, I know at night, I don't be out late at night, but, and I know these kids, they go out late at night, and they come from the clubs, and, you know, I don't know how we can change that, this is a new breed of children out there, you know what I'm saying? The thing of it is, it's too much going on here in Zion. I've been here since ninety-five, and we've never had this much crime that we have in here in Zion. Maybe we need to get some more officers that's from the community. I know there's not a, if they don't mind where you live at, but maybe we need people that's in the community, that go to church, go to the grocery store, and stuff like that, that they can see more of these police, and stop working with the police. I'm not knocking the police, I'm not knocking the police, y'all doing the best you can with what you got, you know, but as a citizen of Zion, as a community activist, it's too much going on. A lot of kids don't even know the laws, if you stop them, they want to give you the law, and don't even know the law. So, as a founder, as Detective Director of Black Lives Matter, we're doing a use-of-force workshop with the Waukegan Police Department. It's gonna be Thursday, September 30th, from six to eight. This is where, and it's gonna be here on at the Black Lives Matter building at 216 North County Street. Councilor McDowell, I really want you to be there, because you don't know what Black Lives Matter do, so, this is my invitation to you, to be there, so you can give a little understanding, to see that we ain't out here doing no grass, no protesting, I'm just trying to save our community, you know what I'm saying? So, I'm fighting all y'all to come down, even you too, sir, to come down, and bring in any flyers, but, I got a flyer here, but it's too much crime here, man, and if I can help, let me know, y'all got my personal number, you got my cell number, you got my office number, if I can help, let me know, man, 'cause we gotta do something. Well, I like, I ain't got that many of these, but, I like everybody's got, I see it.
Thank you. Does someone else have a comment they'd like to make, even though you didn't sign in?
Sorry, it was a little late, so I can't.
All right.
Mike seems a little mute after that, but, I just wanted to say, I'm, was a truck driver, and, and we're doing state areas, I was one thirty-four, and Sherwood Road, there's a lot of sound lights parked there, and now all of a sudden, you got a sign up there that says, this is a city of property, I just wondered if the city could put issue like park permits, permits, type park there, and go do a little thing, make a little money on that, just say, a truck driver's parked there, and give us like little permits.
Okay.
That's all I can do, say thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. I'm Leah Barker from the Amity Muslim Community. I am also serving as the National President for the Women's Auxiliary of the Amity Muslim Community, and I'm here to appeal for approval of the seventy-foot height for the minarette for the newly constructed mosque, and I just feel that I should kind of remind the Chair and the Council that in the history of religious organizations, steeples and synagogues and minarets are seen as a symbol of a religious peaceful institution, and the height shouldn't be an issue, as it was at our previous meeting with the officials, because the height, according to architects, they believe that the height of these religious institutions have an appeal of grace and elegance, and also, that in the past, these heights were reminders for the community to remember God and also live in a, you know, Godly passion, and as the gentleman just mentioned it, you know, right now, we have an influx of crime and situations where youth are being victimized, whether it's crime that they're instituting themselves, but still, we need some remembrance here of our godly obligations. But one of the things I'd like to remind the body here is that the heights of these towers are nothing new. The first traffic control tower was fifteen feet, the Sears Tower in Chicago is one thousand four hundred fifty-one feet, the Tribune Tower in Chicago was four hundred sixty-three feet, a Jewish synagogue height is seventy-nine feet, and a holy cathedral church in Chicago stands seventy feet. So, the mosque in Zion, which will be one of the first mosques built in Zion, and also, I'd like to say that Muslim women of this community, we raised the money to build this mosque, the two point zero million dollars, and we did that because we've been working diligently in our community to serve the children and provide for them camps where they can come together and learn how to live calmly within their diversity. So, this minarette, God willing, will be a symbol for not only our community, but Zion community at large, that represents diversity and hopefully a sign of peace, so.
Thank you very much. Item number six, consider.
Approval of minutes from a regular meeting held on September 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Approval would not release of full session minutes of a meeting held September 7th, 2021, at 7:42 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. So moved by McDowell.
Second.
Second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 6B.
Bills, vouchers 138, 438, through 138, 536, drawn on Huntington National Bank NA, total four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-four cents.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number seven, consider passing ordinances as follows. Item 7A, to lease certain property approximately two thousand four hundred and thirty square feet, situated on the Eighteenth Street right of way, adjacent to 1721 North Shirt Row, for the purpose of having paid that access to tenant parking per Director Ionsen.
Your Honor, seeing that LVT is requesting a renewed agreement with the city to reduce the Eighteenth Street right of way, the ten and approximately twenty-four hundred and thirty square feet for access to tenant parking.
Who makes the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holmes.
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries.
Item number seven B, approving a plat of consolidation for lots thirty eighteen and thirty twenty, Gabriel Avenue, per Director Iyantin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Kevin Parcer of the Amadeus Community requests that council consider a plat of consolidation for lots thirty eighteen and thirty twenty Gabriel Avenue. They'd like to consolidate the lots and add additional parking, so if not, you see the lot's already required.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by, motion by Holmes.
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have a question to, uh, Director Iyantin. Is this the kind of thing that, uh, like a petition, uh, to the neighbors would have to be done?
Uh, may I remind you of the consolidation, uh, that this has been from the city council.
Thank you.
Just no questions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries.
Item seven C, approving a plat of consolidation for lots twenty-one eleven and twenty-one thirteen Gilead Avenue, per Director Iyantin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Michael Patricia of twenty-one eleven Gilead Avenue, is requesting that council consider approval of life consolidation for lots twenty-one eleven, twenty-one thirteen Gilead Avenue. They'd like to consolidate the lots and add an accessory building, so if not, you see the lot coverage requirements on consistent plan.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries.
Item eight, discussion authorization and approval. Eight A, consider zoning docket twenty-one Z-dash-nine in ordinance requesting a variance from Zion Municipal Code, section one oh two dash one fifty-two, parentheses three, uh, parentheses D, to build an additional accessory building and one oh five dash fifty-three, parentheses one, G H, to allow an art studio to be moved from the principal building to the accessory building at the property located at twenty-one eleven Gilead, per Director Iyantin. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
It's actually a typo, it should be one oh two to one fifty-three. Michael Patricia of twenty-one eleven Gilead Avenue, is requesting a variance to section one oh two, one fifty-three, to build an additional accessory. Current code reads that accessory building can have a square footage of the principal building. You're asking to exceed the principal building by eighty-three square feet. You're also requesting a variance to section one oh two, one fifty-three, one G H, of Zion Municipal Code, to allow to remove the art studio, studio from the principal building to accessory building. This case will not be used, I'm sorry, this case will be used only for their use, will not be used for other program. If the hog is good, twenty-one one, it's always a commission meeting, you're required to show your full residence.
Is there a motion to approve with the correction of one oh two, uh, one fifty-three?
So moved.
So moved, motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
Um, I noticed that there were a number of residents that attended the meeting. Some expressed concern about the height of the tower, and some commissioners expressed concern about the height of the, the tower. In reference to, uh, the offset, um, I know that the architect is-
If I may, Commissioner?
This is the-
This is the, the-
This is a different property.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we're not, we're not to their, we're not to that yet.
Okay, sorry.
Next.
Uh, I did have one question. So, if they're not using this for retail, and did you speak to them about, uh, why the space is going to be so large for the art studio?
Yeah, they would see the difference in space, you know, if you notice if you work in a gallery where you're putting the artwork, you're seeing the space to be more.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries.
Item number eight B, consider zoning docket twenty-one Z-ten in ordinance requesting a variance from Zion Municipal Code, section one oh two dash thirty-two, A two, to increase the height of the minarette to seventy feet at the property located at twenty-seven hundred Lewis Avenue, per Director Iyantin. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would be able to move with the new law, is requesting a variance to section one oh two, three two, eight two, of Zion Municipal Code, to increase the height of the minarette to seventy feet at the property located at twenty-seven hundred Lewis Avenue. Currently, the mosque project is operating in a special use plan for religious activity in our two residential district, which the maximum height of the lot is forty feet. They're requesting increase the height of the minarette to official thirty. Letter was provided by FAA stating that problem not here with the flight patterns, meaning that the Waukegan Airport will require a special light. So, kind of second point, twenty-one one, for the zoning commission meeting, you recommend to approve the variance to the law for three.
Is there a motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve.
Um, motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions, comments?
Sorry, I got ahead of myself the last, uh, round. So, um, just getting back to the, the issue of the height of the tower. I noticed that some residents expressed concern about the, uh, flight patterns, but I think those were addressed by a letter from the FAA. Uh, was the offset issue addressed at all at the meeting? In, in terms of the height of the tower and, uh, would it fall into the roadway, uh, would it be a, um, I mean, I, I know that the architect is pretty sure that it's not going to fall, but-
Yeah, so, um, now, the tower was explained as being, if the structure they had built wasn't going to be at a certain point.
Are there going to have to be any adjustments to the plan? Um, the size of the base or anything like that that also needs additional approval, or this covers it all?
No, they will have to resubmit for, uh, for the change in that.
And did I see in the FAA letter that should flight patterns change or situations change, that there would perhaps be additional requirements for the tower of that height? Or is that, did I not read that right?
The way I just know that the current, the way it is, the way it is now, no, no additional requirement for any necessary.
Did any of the residents, uh, I mean, the objections that I've read here had to do with, uh, the, the flight pattern and, um, the offset. Did any residents object, uh, based on, um, the, uh, the, the look of the neighborhood, uh, how it might affect, um, other residents in the neighborhood?
The only concern that really was raised is, is the traffic, and we're concerned about additional traffic.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, uh, also, Commissioner McDowell, I, I recently met with the, uh, the authorities at the Lake County Airport, and they're in the process of moving their runway, uh, relocating one of their runways to, uh, be more south of, of Zion or sort of landing fails. Uh, there were some questions about the relocation of it and the impact it would have on the residents. I live in that area, so the, so the pattern moving a little bit south certainly helps a little bit. And they're trying to be cognizant of, uh, impacting the people that also live in Beach Park where the, uh, flights come in, so.
I, I just wanted to say thank you to the Amadeus Muslim, um, community for choosing to build, um, in Zion. I, I think it will, uh, bring, uh, continue to, uh, good exposure to our city. So, thank you.
So, we had a motion and a second.
Mm-hmm.
And we have, any further questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item eight C, consider zoning docket twenty-one Z-eleven in ordinance requesting a special use permit from section one oh two, six oh eight, eight of the Zion Municipal Code, to operate a transportation organization at twenty-seven oh one Deborah Avenue, per Director Iyantin. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. General City, LLC, formerly known as R T Pauling, is seeking a special use permit from section one oh two, six oh eight, eight, of Zion Municipal Code, to operate a transportation organization to transport cannabis and cannabis use products located at twenty-seven oh one Deborah Avenue. In June of twenty-twenty, the planning and zoning commission voted for two of the special use permits for R T Pauling, but due to any department's partner in business name changes, we are required to repetition of the special use permits. The second amendment detected twenty-one one, the zoning commission meeting, they were to approve the special use permit.
Is there a motion to approve?
All move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Questions or comments?
I do have one question. On the ordinance, on page one, of the property commonly known as twenty-seven hundred Deborah Avenue, should that be twenty-seven oh one?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so that needs to be, uh, corrected? Because I think twenty-seven hundred is a empty lot.
I'll make a note and notify.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Notes of, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries.
Item eight D, consider zoning docket twenty-one Z-twelve in ordinance requesting a text amendment from section one oh two, two oh two, one, of the Zion Municipal Code, to amend permitted obstruction in yard, per, yards, per Director Iyantin. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can I just request that you amend the section one oh two, two oh two, one, of Zion Municipal Code, to amend permission to obstruction in the yard? The current code does not specify any percentage of obstructions in portions due to state's decks and ramps. The amendment changed the law for obstruction not to exceed twenty-five percent of the depth in the yard. For instance, we have thirty-foot step back that would exceed more than seven half feet, just thirty-foot step back. September second, twenty-four, the zoning commission meeting, we're going to approve the next.
Is there a motion to approve the text amendment?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
It seems like a really small change, so what, what brought about the request?
We get a lot of requests in existing suits and portions to expand as the building line or ramps, eighty-eight ramps, realty. If, if seven and a foot would allow standard eight ramp, we'd need to install, so, that's what you're doing.
Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item eight E, request permission to waive bids and purchase a Stryker Lucas CPR assist device through Stryker EMS for the fire rescue department, per Chief Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is my turn for a little bit. Um, attached to your, uh, board packet is a quote, background information and purchase agreement for Stryker Lucas CPR assist device for the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Uh, this will be paid entirely with IPRF grant funds. It will be a valuable piece of equipment to help our staff on cardiac arrest calls. Uh, this device actually handles the chest compression portion of CPR, freeing up a paramedic to work on other important tasks. Uh, this also improves paramedic safety as the device reduces wear and tear on rescuer arms, shoulders, and backs. I'm requesting approval of the purchase agreement as presented for a total cost of sixteen thousand, two eighty-five, fifty-three. I also request that City Council waive the bid process and recognize Stryker EMS as a single-source vendor of this specialized equipment.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
Uh, Chief, any particular reason Stryker as a single-source vendor is this just because it's specialized equipment?
Yeah, the, this model is trademarked by Stryker. There's some different type of CPR assist devices, but they're completely different setups and styles, and they've all been, um, tested and vetted by other area fire departments. And this one, it has been seen, or being deemed to be the most user-friendly, um, cost-effective, um, just the best device. And they're the only maker of this specific device. Thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number eight F, request permission to waive bids and purchase a turnout gear washer for the fire rescue department, per Chief Street.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, attached is a purchase agreement for a new firefighting turnout gear washer. Uh, it's technically known, known as an extractor, uh, for the amount of twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, this will also be paid entirely with IPRF grant funds. It will replace our unit at Station Two that is well over twenty-five years old and currently inoperable. Uh, the importance of washing our turnout gear, uh, after every fire and at certain intervals throughout each year just can't be understated. Numerous studies have proven the increased danger of cancer in firefighters is mainly due to carcinogens found in certain, and other remnants of fires. I believe that this is in the best interest of the members of the department and in the, uh, Zion public at large. I'm requesting approval of this purchase agreement as presented for a total cost of twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. I also request that City Council waive the bid process and recognize that this is a single-source vendor of this specialized equipment. The only local vendor of this Univac, Unimac, unit is from a company out of Velcro Village.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion by, uh, Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Fisher? Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
I apologize. Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries, and thank goodness for bids, I mean for grants. Item eight G, request permission to enter into an agreement with HGAC for the purchase of one ambulance, per Chief Street.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, attached to your meeting packet are specifications and costs for a replacement ambulance, which will both be delivered and paid for in budget year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, since Ford and A V ambulance are a full one-year out for any orders placed now. Uh, this ambulance will replace our current eighteen forty-one, which is our first out ambulance at Station One. Uh, and it's currently a two thousand fourteen Ford with a hundred and thirty-two thousand miles on it. Our other two ambulances also have well over a hundred thousand miles, and them are used and are used often. Uh, our plan as of right now is to try to keep a, the current eighteen forty-one as a forced ambulance for when it is, out of, for when another is out of service for maintenance, and also for the very occasional times that we would possibly be able to staff a fourth ambulance. Uh, I am requesting approval of the purchase agreement as presented for a total cost of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, purchases through the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program, which has already conducted the bid process uh, for this single-source vendor of A V ambulance.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Holmes? Uh, questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item eight H, tabulation of bids, concrete asphalt fire station number two, bid for Chief Street.
Just a couple more, I promise. Thank you again. Um, attached are the bid results for the Station Two Concrete and Asphalt Repair Project. Uh, I am requesting and recommending awarding the base bid only for this project to the lowest responsible bidder, Whitney Moran Construction Company, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, funding for this project was included in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget, though the above figure represents a twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollar increase, uh, from our initial cost estimates. This is mainly due, uh, to the expansion of the size of the concrete pad to extend all the way to Lewis Avenue. I'm requesting that the, this approval includes a budget amendment for that amount. Uh, copies of the bid tabulations can be obtained from the city's own website and are on file with the city clerk and fire rescue department offices.
Is there a motion to approve the tabulation of bids?
All move to approve. A second.
Motion by Fryerson, second by, uh, Fisher. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item eight I, consider wage adjustment for the fire rescue department administrative assistant position, per Chief Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, I'm requai, requesting a wage adjustment for the fire rescue department administrative assistant position. Uh, the new hourly wage would be seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents per hour effective pay period beginning September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
Would this be something budgeted for?
Um, there would be a small, a very small to the ten of about two thousand dollar increase in the- There would be a small, a very small to the ten of about $2,000 increase in the personnel line, which will be absorbed with our, with the total personnel line that the budget was approved for.
And this was one of the items that Administrator Nabel was not here tonight, not feeling well, that we talked about in a previous council meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number 8J, consider appointment to the tip board for review per Mayor McKinney. Collette Davis, our assessor, has a three-year term, her commission expires in 4/30/24. And Tekeisha Adams, I'll do one at a time, is there, and Tekeisha Adams, a five-year term, commission expires on 4/30/26. Is there a motion to approve the tip?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Fireson, second by Fisher. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item 8K, consider appointment to the special events commission per Mayor McKinney. Special events commission, Christine Workman with the Park District, a four-year term that expires 4/30/25. Chance Brigham, who gave our prayer tonight, three-year term, commission expires on 4/30/24. Samaya Charity, a three-year term, commission expires on 4/30/24. Olivia Livingston, a four-year term, commission expires on 4/30/25. And Chris Cupick, one of our teachers at Zion, been in high school, three-year term, commission expires 4/30/24. Is there a motion to approve the special events commission?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fireson, second by Holmes. Questions, comments?
Apart from the, I think the, our economic director, Sonalita Bronson, is already on the committee because she's in the chair, isn't she?
Yes.
Are there any other members of this committee, or is this yet?
This is, and Sonalita was here, so she could, we, we talked about this a couple, several city council meetings ago, that we had two commissions that were serving our nostalgia days and Labor Day parade, and we decided to create one commission, a special events commission, so that it would eliminate a lot of the confusion. And also what we were having is there were some of the people that were involved in some of the old commissions and committees that had pretty much run out of steam in running these, so we've enlisted, we were really contacted by some people that had some fresh ideas, and so we look forward to once we get out of this pandemic next year that we can start some of our activities again in, in the spring.
I just, I can't remember, I know there's a, a policy that goes along with this, but does the police chief and fire chief, do they also sit on this committee?
If I may, sir, they will not be active members of the committee, but when it comes out to planning events, they will be called upon to help with the setup and emergency action plans. Because their jobs are so demanding, we felt that it would be a very easier time to bring them in when we are getting closer to planning events, rather than be a part of the planning so far out.
Trying to, trying to limit their time with the, given that we have, one of the gentlemen here at the citizen comments talked about the need for us to hire more police officers, which we would love to do, and we have some budget restrictions, restrictions, but the other part of it is with the limited staff, we're trying to value their time as much as possible with all the responsibility and the issues that are going on in our community.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number nine, departmental commentary. Director Eisen, any further comments?
Uh, good, Your Honor, yes, just an update on the building list of Galilee and Wonder Valley. All the asbestos has been removed and abated, and all the equipment will become there next Monday.
Uh, thank you for that, that update, and if any of you have driven by that building, it's been vacant for four-plus decades, and it's been a real eyesore in that community, and we have some people that are interested in, in building some facilities there, and if it works out, it's really going to help transform that, that neighborhood. A lot of this work just came through the county, the Community Housing Development Commission, which I sit on the, on the board, and they have been very helpful in, in helping us as part of the land bank, too, being able to demolish buildings in our, that have just eyesores and health hazards and everything like that. The other building that should be torn down, probably in 2022, would be the Old Healia Building, which sits on 27th Street across from Central Middle School. So we, we've worked really hard, and the people on the county boards have recognized the challenges that we've had, and because of our participation on those different boards, they've been, we've been getting some money, much-needed money to help us improve the look of our city. Commissioner Eisen, the gentleman asked about the, a possible place to park trucks, and I know when I was a building, the building commissioner, you and I had driven around and tried to look for open spaces that would be viable, which it was very difficult to find.
Yeah, it's very limited, and that space especially is going to be developed here fairly soon, so it's very limited.
And we're also trying to minimize the big rig parking in our city, and if you go through some of our neighborhoods, I know our police department has done a terrific job of some of these people parking at nights on, on the streets. You can see the wear and tear on the highways, but it's, it's not where they're supposed to be parked, and we had received some comments from citizens about, it seemed like the trucks were starting to multiply at that position, and our building department, when it brought to their attention, went right out there. Every time I've gone by it over the net last week or so, it's been vacant except for the sign, so thank you for the quick response, Director.
Director Eisen, a couple of years ago, there was a property that was developed for truck parking on Green Bay. Are they still running that, the old air slot?
Yes, they're, the old air slot. It seemed to be full, so I don't know how much room is out there, but I can imagine.
Thank you.
Right, good question. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. We are, the water department is continuing this week to flush higher. Citizens at the time when they're flushing may experience a little lower pressure. They may also experience some groundwater coming out when they go turn on their faucet. If they express that, if they use the groundwater, just go ahead and let your water run. There's nothing wrong with it, it's still chemically treated. It's just we have broken with some of the sag slag within the pipes for flushing. Our 2021 road project is completed, it's about 95% complete. We continue doing scraping, finish it up either end of this week or beginning of next week. I was also received a phone call from Lake County Council Mayor. Prior to this, we approved the 27th Street FNE project that was scheduled to go on construction in 2025. They asked me if we cared if they moved it up to 2022. I hesitated a little bit, did tell them, yes, we would do that. So it looks like that probably will be moved to 2022, and that is a federal assisted project, where it's a $1.1 million project, where we're receiving $850,000 in grant.
And that will go from?
That will go from Galilee, 27th Galilee to, no, it's, so approximately 10 blocks.
With the, one question, I want to go back to the flushing, the flushing. Will we put something out on one of the, on the Public Works Facebook page on Facebook so our residents will know and not, not panic?
Uh, we have the Facebook page, sir. We utilize the city Zion one, which Director Nabel did place that on there.
Okay.
And it's also posted on the city website.
Okay. We'll, we'll also make sure that we post it in some of the other social media, just so in case people don't check our website, we'll get that information out, so we won't have questions about that.
Questioning, are we able to use Blackboard for that to push out any messages or files that are already signed up for the areas?
Well, each day we're in different areas, I don't know if we want to continue. I know we had some discussion about what we really wanted to use Blackboard for or not for. I think we found more capital for the use of just emergency only, for oil orders and stuff like that.
All right, thank you, Director Roberts. Again, Director Nabel is not here this evening. Chief Street?
Thanks, Mayor Commissioners. I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. Thanks for your support on some pretty important issues for us tonight. We do appreciate that. You have previously approved three full-time hires for our department for vacancies for different reasons. I'm proud to say we finally filled those three. So by the end of the month, we'll have them actually on shift working firefighter, paramedic positions, so we're very happy about that. That'll help our, our overtime expenses moving forward. And the third thing I wanted to mention, kind of a sad mention, but I wanted to fill you guys in, the unexpected passing of one of our ESDA members, Sean Bush, and his visitation is at Constance on Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00.
Thank you for that news. I've read about that, and I know there've been a lot of responses on Facebook about that, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you.
Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. I wanted to highlight a few things. We are, as, as Mr. Macklemore said, we are looking for some more officers, and I've been asking the board of the police and fire commissioners to approve language for lateral hire and adopt that language, which they've done, I'm happy to announce. So we will be reviewing the application process, and in short notice, we will be pushing that information out and accepting applications. If you have anybody interested that's already in law enforcement that would like to come work for the city, that opportunity will, will be coming soon. I will just update, a regular hire process, we're still compiling a list. As the chief just mentioned, it is somewhat of a task to get through the hiring process. It takes a long time, it's, there's a lot of parts to it, so we're, we're starting, we're starting our process for the, for the regular listing, and we hope to have that list and those processes finished up soon. Commissioner, you took my, as I was writing it down, Blackboard Connect, I want to encourage your citizens to sign up for that. That was one of the things that we did want to do in events that are emergent, we need to, we need to notify mass amounts of people quickly. That, that does help us push that information out quickly and notify the public if needed. Crime Stoppers is also, as, as one of the citizen comments mentioned, some of the violence in town. I'd like to encourage our citizens, if you have any information, please make that known. You can do it anonymously through Crime Stoppers, it's 847-662-2222. I think I mentioned that last, last meeting as well, so I'll keep on that because that is important, it does help us, and there are some times where we may be stalled on an investigation, and those tips, they do provide valuable information. And then my last comment is about the high school. This seems to have been a hot topic for a lot of people, and it is very emotional, and understandably so. I will, we will address this going forward. There's been a, a lot of conversation, a lot of networking. This was a joint effort, this was a partnership that we've dealt with, with the school. We have protocols in place, we have trained on these protocols, we don't diverge from the protocols. I know some of the comments have been that we changed mid-process. There's a lot of confusion when these things happen, and I'm very happy to, to say, I'm, I will gladly accept the complaints and, and the feedback, and gratefully acknowledge that we're not mourning the loss of any children. We learned from these things, we learn every time. We try to do it perfectly, and sometimes we don't, because there's something we didn't see, something that changed and we, and we needed to adapt to. We are working, this isn't something that we, we just simply pat ourselves on the back for and say we did a great job, move on, move on about our day. This is, this is a challenging thing. We have, myself, my staff, and the school have been working in concert on addressing some of these issues. But when we have major incidents like this and, and where we call mutual aid from other area departments, it's extremely important that we stay on task with what we've trained. That may not make sense to some people that haven't done that, but it's extremely important that we speak the same language. And when I say we, I called in mutual aid assistance from multiple agencies in the county. It's important that we train the same way, and we train the same system, because we all, when we come together, my department doesn't have enough staff at any one time to respond to a school incident of that magnitude. We have to rely on those partnerships and that mutual aid. And therefore, the way we train, we, we do multi-agency trainings. Chief Moen, the parbor, and I just last, well, now COVID has kind of messed up my timeline, but recently, we have, we have done a large-scale school rescue task force training and, and shooting incident training. These things are highly complex, they are rapidly changing and evolving, and I understand that information gets pushed out, and sometimes that information isn't the most accurate, and we work really hard on maintaining accurate information pushed out to the parents and to the public. We know that those times are extremely stressful and frightening, as they should be. Those parents should be, should be scared, I would be too. We try to do the best we can to, to calm those fears, and by providing accurate information and being as constant, and, and we'll work on it, we'll do better. But we have to provide accurate information, we can't just keep putting information out to be timely and to make people feel better, because sometimes if that information is wrong, it's really hard to walk back on that. So I, I appreciate the comments and the criticisms and the concerns. I, I ask the public and the parents to be patient and understand that we are working in concert with the school, it is a partnership, and fingers crossed that we don't have these responses in the future. In the event that we do, some of the things that we've learned, I understand reunification was a big part of the complaint. These are things that are, that are challenging for us, but I've given the school my assurance and my promise that we will give them anything that they need going forward when they have a plan for reunification, whatever it is, we'll, we'll do what we can. So I just want to, I want to put that out there, because I know that's hit hard on our community recently this week. We had a town hall meeting at the high school, and I want to thank Dr. Rodriguez for allowing that to happen. You know, that's a challenging thing, and we don't like to hear criticism, nobody does. But his, his leadership and his willingness to open that up and let people vent is, is a true testimony of his intent to better the school and better the partnership that we have with them. So I wanted to thank, say thank you for that, and know that we're, we're still working on this incident. We are going to be doing a debrief between the, the police agencies that were involved, the school, city officials that were involved. So this isn't done for us, this is, this is still quite a bit of progress. So thank you, appreciate it, I didn't mean to talk too long.
No, I, I think great comments, and, and as we went through this, as this happened, one of the things that our residents have to know, people that hear that, that we listened to last night, is everything that we do here, whether it's with our fire department, our building department, we review what's been done and how we can get better. And sometimes it might not be the way, we hear the criticism in a way in which it's not exactly constructive, but we still listen, and we, we try to get better with everything that we, that we've done, and we'll continue to do that with communication. Our communication with Dr. Rodriguez and his staff has been tremendous.
Prior to the town hall meeting, I spent two hours with a Zion leaders group and that was all the members of the taxing bodies, talking about the issues that face our community, whether it's financial, whether it's the crime, and there's crime here, it's everywhere. You pick up the paper every morning, there was a school shooting in Virginia. This is just unconscionable that this is, is happening. But these are the times in which we live in and we all have to find a way to manage them collectively. One of the big topics when we were talking at the, the Zion leaders was the resocialization of our kids because there's, there's been discussion that there's been a lot of fights at the high school, football games in, in different places. So kids are resocializing and so are adults. And I, I hear you loud and clear, Mrs. White, about our employees talking to residents in a way that's respectful, but there's also a two-way street. I think in spite of what people pay you, what's being paid, and we always hear that, we pay your salary. There's some, some things that have been lost within the last four years, it's called civility towards one another. And so if we want to expect people to be civil to us, we have to be civil towards them as well. And I know that situation, I can't even imagine being a parent in that situation and the fear that I would have felt if something was happening to my kids. But I know this, that we put people in place to protect our children, whether it's our, our schools. We hire teachers to educate them. We have police departments to protect them. And sometimes what has to happen is people have to let those people do their jobs. And it's easy to be an armchair quarterback about what could have happened, all hypothetical situations. But I, I can tell you this, in being around our police department and things that we talk about on probably every day, or four or five days a week, we're talking about every situation, not only happens here, but happens regionally, nationally or internationally. And how are we preparing for it if it happens here? Two weeks ago, I sat down with five mayors in the area and we talked with Senator Tammy Duckworth about how tough it is to hire police officers now. They're being mercenary right now. They jump from department to department because one is paying them two more dollars an hour than, or $2,000 more per year. So this is a real issue for us with the year of civil unrest, the last eighteen months of civil unrest. It's been hard everywhere for people to hire police officers. People don't want the job with the abuse that they get day in and day out. Chicago was down 3,000 police from last year. Our force is down, but we still continue to talk about strategies to reach out to the high school and have career days and reintroduce our students to our police officers in a way in which they haven't been probably in the past. So that we can bridge that gap between what people, or students, our residents think of police, and what the reality is. So we continue to work on that, but we thank you for your, your comments. Commissioners, any commissioners have any comments? Commissioner McDowell?
I would, I would like to thank Mr. Abu Bakar and his, his wife for bringing the information on the Minaret to us. And Mr. Cox, thank you very much. That was an impassioned and very succinct description of your, of the project. And I think we're looking forward to seeing the finished, the finished product.
My, my last comment before I go to the next portion is we've had extensive talks with Dr. Rodriguez. One of the things that's been hap, what's happened in our community for years now, even with the taxes, which we have the tight highest tax rate in the state of Illinois, which is absolutely ridiculous. There's new energy bill that was passed that's going to guarantee the City of Zion money. It is certainly a starter for us to be able to help our, our, our citizens in, in different ways from a tax standpoint. And we hope all the taxing bodies also participate in that once we start receiving those funds. Dr. Rodriguez hit on a point yesterday. And your husband mentioned it tonight, where he felt as if the school was taking all the responsibility and the criticism for what happened yesterday. Sitting there in the crowd as the mayor of the city and hearing the commentary, I felt like our police department was taking a brunt of the criticism. And as we continue to move forward with this process of communication, which is critical, we have to all be on the same page about it. It's not about pointing fingers now, but what's happening over there affects everything here in town. If our students aren't in school, they're not graduating, it creates other issues for us. And one of the things that I did not hear last night, and I understand the fear and the anger that people felt about the chaos that was presented, have any of the parents that were so concerned, members of the school board, staff, have you reached out to the parents of those kids?
Are you asking me?
I'm just, I'm just.
If I knew, I promise you I would.
I, I, I'm saying, and, and this is part of the process to me, if, if we're going to close this loop of communication, those kids created a real traumatic experience for everybody here. Last Friday, chief and I were at a charity event, supporting a local foundation. And one of the things we said was Friday morning, seven-thirty, and we said, you know, we wake up every day and think how great it would be for something bad not to happen in our city. Because when that happens, it impacts every single one of us. Elected officials, city employees, residents. And we are working with every possible agency in town that holds the small percentage of people that cause the ninety-eight percent of our problems here. We are trying to make sure as we push for home rule, that crime free housing was a part of it. Not raising taxes, crime-free housing, which everyone should relish, so that we can live and enjoy our communities and our neighborhoods and our homes without fear of some of the things that go on, not only here in Zion, but all over, Waukegan, North Chicago, Chicago, Gurnee, Round Lake, it happens everywhere. We'd love to live in a perfect society, but we're going to have to find ways to manage the craziness that we're all dealing with right now. And as to Mayor, you're right. There's a lot of, as I said, uneases the head that wears the crown. And I take that responsibility and I take whatever goes with it. But know that every day, there's not a day that we're not all working here with the city and the commissioners, our city attorneys, trying to make things better for our citizens in Zion. So again, thank you for your, your words, your criticisms. And we will continue to collaborate with the high school in a, in a, in a way, and the other taxing bodies in a way that we can all feel good, that we are all on the same page. And I felt that for the last three of these meetings that we've had right now, everybody is talking the talk and walking the walk, which is more important. I remember Tanner's announcement, October fifth, seven PM, for a Zion City Council meeting. October nineteenth at six PM, there's a Zion Township meeting. And October nineteenth, seven PM, a Zion City Council meeting. I remember Levin, is there a motion to adjourn? So move?
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for coming out tonight and everybody have a safe evening.